Windsor Essex Children's Aid Society is excited to launch an innovative podcast titled Inspiring Community. The society is very aware of the diverse, multifaceted elements of our community that come together to support children, youth and families as they celebrate success and rise to overcome significant financial, social and mental health challenges. Hosts Mike Clark, manager of Public Relations and Fund Development, and Tina Allen, manager of Community Outreach, will be reaching out to many of the society's community partners and resource organizations to provide insight and helpful suggestions to help overcome these obstacles. The goal will be to provide a practical toolkit for listeners on topics such as managing parenting issues, financial strain, self-care, strengthening relationships, and so much more. The hope is that by talking with community experts, listeners feel more connected within a community of support. Join us as we look at new ways to reach for a better tomorrow. In this episode, we visit the Windsor Essex Catholic District School Board to speak with Kellyanne Bull, Superintendent of Education, and Danielle Campbell-McLeod, Mental Health Lead.
Hello, everyone. Welcome to Inspiring Community. Tina and I are thrilled to be with you today and have our guests Kellyanne Bull, Superintendent of Education, and Danielle Campbell-McLeod, Mental Health Lead for the Windsor Essex Catholic District School Board as our guests today.
Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike and Tina. So glad to be here.
Yeah, we're so glad to have you. So we'll start out, Kellyanne, can you share a little bit about yourself and how you got your start in the education sector? And your journey to becoming Superintendent of Education?
Oh, certainly, Mike. So of course, I started as a teacher, as an educator myself. I taught in the elementary panel. I transitioned into a vice principal role, and then a principal role, and then ultimately a superintendent role. But I have to say, I'm a teacher at heart, always will be. And I just get to work with students in a different fashion now.
That's great.
And Danielle, can you share a little bit about yourself and how your life and career path have brought you to this new role with the board?
Absolutely. So I started as a Child and Youth Work Counselor, actually starting out at Children's Aid Society. And I fell in love with working with the families and kids and went on to pursue my social work degree, continuing to be with our Windsor Essex Children's Aid Society for over 14 years, and transitioned into the nonprofit world, and then just a year ago, joined the Windsor Essex Catholic Board as Mental Health Lead. So that's kind of my career path that's led me here. I'm a former Paralympic swimmer and a mother of five. So those definitely have played a role in what's led to this new journey.
Certainly keeps you busy.
It does, absolutely.
And you've had an incredible life. You've done so much amazing things in your life, and you've had some adversity battling through some of your health issues, and most recently, you've had a health issue that you've also overcome. You're just an amazing, strong person. And how do you bring that into your role in the work that you're doing as Mental Health Lead? Are you able to inspire young people to overcome their challenges and see their own potential?
Absolutely. In this last battle after having my daughter and, you know, facing those life-threatening illnesses, you really reflect on all of the struggles that you've gone through, all of where you've pulled your strength. We come from such an incredible community, and that was highlighted so much to me that, you know, our community rallied behind me. So what I really share with young people now is you never know the strength that these struggles are building. So when I look back as a child, you know, and dealing with a neuromuscular disorder and the bullying, and I get to connect with kids to say like, right now, this sucks, and right now, this is hard. But where it's going to lead you and those tools you're going to have in your backpack to access, I definitely get to bring into my work that I do every day today. And I get to see those lightbulb moments with the kids where, you know, they can connect to, hey, that's what I'm going through. Or, hey, I can turn this into a positive. And I think it's just letting them know there's always people there and getting to be a part of a board where our tagline is, we're with you all the way, and sharing our faith and inspiring them to, you know, it is going to be hard. It's not supposed to be easy, but we get to take those struggles and build our strength from those.
For sure. And being a mom as well, sometimes when you just don't have that strength, you think of your children, you think, I have to fight, I need to fight for them. So it's just a different journey that you're on too in that regard. And talking about the children that you work with through your board and those struggles, can you talk a bit more about what you're seeing our children and youth struggling with these days?
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot. We've come out, you know, it's no surprise coming out of the pandemic and everybody gaining their own strength through COVID and what we've seen. So we're, you know, we're seeing the anxiety, we're seeing kids, you know, needing to go back to those basics and helping to, you know, be there to support them.
Students are sharing with us, we go speak with our students at the high schools, and they are actually so open with sharing what their struggles are. They feel the academic pressure, they feel the pressure from home, they feel all of these forces on them, and they really are looking to educators to helping them cope with these skills, right? So they're very good at letting us know what they need and what's bothering them.
And we're hearing about how important those relationships are. They want that connection, they want that foundation, and they want to know that it's okay that they're not okay. And they want their parents and their teachers to know that it's okay that I'm not okay right now, but I'm reaching out to connect.
And I may do, I may need your support.
And you were talking about the impacts of COVID, and I know that my own daughter experienced some challenges during COVID, and that was in grade eight. She's 16 now. So that was a real turning point for youth, and we know social media has also been a significant factor. Are you seeing a lot even prior to COVID, a shift in what youth and children are experiencing?
Well, you mentioned social media, Tina, and I would have to say that has played an important role in students' ability to manage relationships, right? How they network with each other is very different. And the stress that social media places on relationships has been very impactful on our students. Even just keeping their Snapchat stream alive, right? And all that takes time, and it takes time out of the classroom, and that adds another component of stress. How do I keep my stream live, right? So social media definitely has impacted how our students are able to manage their own emotions.
And I think we're also seeing, as Kelly mentioned, you know, we're talking to the students and we're hearing them say, you know, this is a great platform where we can reach a lot of people. So we see the struggle and we hear the struggle and the pressures that are put on with them. It's not like when we grew up and, you know, if something was said and then you went home and it was forgot by last recess, right? They're reliving it over and over, but they're also letting us know that we can change that. This is something that we could do to use for good, to reach out. And so it's amazing to see their resilience that they're building.
Yes.
When we were young, it was the kids standing against the fence, and you know they were talking about you, right? But it wasn't, it wasn't online, and it wasn't all the time. So now they're going home and they're in their bedroom and they're on their phone and they can see those people.
They carry that with them everywhere they go.
Exactly. Yeah, it's very different. Yeah.
For sure.
Now, having said that, all of us grew up remembering a special teacher or a teacher that maybe wasn't so special per se. But how would you say the role of educator has changed over the years? And what, I guess, what some of the priorities are for an educator or a teacher in today's society?
I think you're right, Mike. I mean, the role of an educator has always been important in students. And like you said, there's always one that you connect with, and there's always one that you're going to remember for the rest of your life because you didn't connect with them, right? But I think what has changed are the factors that are impacting our students, right? And even just the fact that mental health is talked about more apparently by students. And students are approaching educators and asking them for help. I think that's what's changed. So the role of educator has had to adjust because they're not only teaching math or teaching English, they're also teaching very important social emotional skills and where to access help. I think we have, we wear many hats as an educator, right? We're not just teaching that subject. We become a parent at times, we become a counselor at times. We become a safety factor for that student. So we wear many hats as educators, and our educators work very hard in the classroom to make sure they're meeting the needs of the students in front of them.
Now, I guess kind of adding to what we already said, and we touched on the whole topic of social media. But, you know, we live in very troublesome times, both globally, with things that are happening in the world, things that are happening all around us. So having said that, how do you, as educators, help young people cope with some of that? And some of the struggles that they might be having emotionally, socially, and that type of thing, dealing with those circumstances that seem to be surrounding them?
So you're talking traumatic events that might be happening in our world?
We really take from our board a perspective of that promotion of wellness. We're really coming at it from a positive angle of an all approach for all students, that students are walking through those doors of their school, feeling that welcome, safe environment, knowing that it's a place that there are safe adults that they can turn to, that there are safe, caring adults that want to connect with you. That connection is so important for our students, and our staff across the board are amazing at making students feel welcomed. All of our staff knowing and helping the children to feel safe in that building and to have a safe place to ask those courageous questions. What's going on? What can I do? Or even just connecting to say, I don't feel my best today, and where do I go? We really work hard on students knowing who they can turn to. We have a big piece of our board that's on parent engagement and helping parents to recognize when their kids aren't feeling their best or signs that, you know, they may be struggling so that we can do that early intervention. And we really push to connect with the community. And really, you know, school is a safe place where we want them to strive holistically and reach that academic success, but also making sure that those bridges out to our community for support are there for the kids when they do need it. And always engaging in those conversations of what is wellness? And how do we practice it when we're feeling good so that when we're not feeling good, we have those tools to rely on?
So in saying that, we know that mental health wellbeing is part of the Ontario curriculum, obviously a priority with your board, but boards across our community. So what does that really look like? Can you give some examples of what, how you are embracing this wellness? It's such a big topic, and there's so many domains within that. Can you give some examples of what that might look like for your school?
Yeah, I think what's really exciting is this isn't new for us, which coming in as the new Mental Health Lead and hearing, you know, that the Ministry of Education was putting some parameters around wellness and in curriculum, and us all kind of sitting back and saying, you know, woo-hoo, we've got this, like, this is what we're doing. We do this. So it was really validating that, you know, this is what we're doing. And watching our staff is amazing to see how they're already doing that. And Kelly can talk to a little bit more of the framework that was introduced.
So when you're talking curriculum, Tina, we've always had a focus on social emotional learning, especially with our younger folks in elementary school. Now with the new grade seven and eight mandatory modules that the ministry has put in place, there's more of a focus for those students to really learn what is mental health stigma? How do we get rid of it? How do we help students get help when they need it? So providing more of really good lessons about knowing what a mental health illness might look like, knowing what mental wellness looks like and the difference between the two, right? And then we transition into high school, and there's even more mental health literacy modules available for educators, for students. So the ministry has put into place a wealth of information for us, and we collaborate with School Mental Health Ontario. School Mental Health Ontario has put together multiple lesson plans and units for educators to use, also for students to access as well as parents to access. So I think with the light shining on mental wellness, there really has been a lot of supports to go with it. And as Danielle said, we've always been focusing on it. So when the new ministry, PPM 169, came out telling us, this is what you shall do, we were already in a really good place of, we're doing this. Now we can just fine tune it to what our students need.
And I do want to say, I did go on your board website, and you have an incredible amount of resources for parents, for students around wellness. And you do have a Facebook page as well, your Windsor, W E, Windsor Essex Catholic District School Board Wellness Facebook page. So lots of great information on there too for those. And you don't have to be a member of your board, you don't have to be a family that attends a Catholic school in our community. Anyone can access that information. So it was great to see all of that.
Wonderful.
Yeah, it was, it's really great to see the collaborative approach that we take as well. You know, we talked about the role of an educator and the support that we can provide them from our mental health team as well. You know, it's not just that one-on-one work with the student, but that collaborative, sometimes it's being in the classroom and helping, you know, so the educators have that support of what needs to be done in the classroom.
And you raise a good point because you can't do that work alone. You rely on organizations in the community to help support these students and the families. So there's a great list of those connections on your board website as well. So that's great.
So I think you were, I mean, Danielle was talking about our service model that every classroom. So our, we operate under a tiered service model in our board. So there's three tiers. At the tier one, everybody is involved in helping students learn about mental wellness. There may be some students who need a little bit more, more intervention. So then we would move on to a tier two model. And at that, at that level, we may involve Child and Youth Workers, we may involve psychotherapists or social workers, but just a little more intense focus on whatever presenting concern we may have. It could be in the form of a group, it could be in form of just an informal discussion. And then if we're finding a student still requires supports, we would move into tier three. And tier three is really where we're doing intense intervention, maybe collaborating with community partners to see what else can we do for this student. But our team is relentless to make sure that we are notifying everybody that needs to be notified about how we can support this student. And there's follow-up. Danielle calls the school the next day to follow up and say, hey, how's it going? How are you feeling? Because that was pretty traumatic yesterday. So Danielle even checks in with our educators and our administrators too, because her role is important. It's about the students, absolutely. But there's a group of people helping that student who are also needing some support. And Danielle does a fantastic job following up to make sure that everybody is well. And all of those supports that are wrapped around the student, everybody needs to be okay.
Can you talk a bit more about what that team looks like? How many social workers do you have with your board and who else is involved?
So we have a multidisciplinary team of Child and Youth Workers, Social Workers. We have roughly, it's hard to say numbers because we have Child and Youth Workers in most of our schools. We have a team of about 10 mental health regulated professionals, including Danielle. Some are psychologists, some are social workers, some are psychotherapists. But they're regulated mental health workers who are able to work with students more intensely, connecting them to community partners.
Great. So moving out of the just mental health picture, your boards had quite success engaging students in some pretty innovative and out-of-the-box alternative education programs. What do you see as your board's greatest successes?
Well, I can share a funny story from last year as the new Mental Health Lead, and thinking I wasn't as old as I actually am and that I knew high school students. And Kelly kind of challenged and said, you know what, I want to run like a summer camp. And I was thinking, having two teenagers at home, I was like, no one's coming to a summer camp. And she was like, we can do this. And so we put together a program that was called Be Well, Be Ready, Be Connected. And it was a transition back from summer into school. We launched that Google Sheet and we had 310 kids respond in literally like a 24-hour period. So I did have to go back and say, you were right. And, but we were so proud to be able to offer that. We went over, traveled through every high school, had a program where they could come, just get back into being in the school, listen to some tips and some tricks on anxiety and coming back, and then send them home with a package as they prepared for coming back to school. And getting to hear the student voice of, I just needed to walk in the building. I just wanted to see, you know, and we had students from grade nine all the way up to grade 12 coming in and sharing. It was incredible to even hear them say, yeah, my lock on my locker is the thing that stresses me out the most. And so what happens when I can't, you know, get that combination right? And so it was a great opportunity to collaborate with the students and to see the response from the community just set our summer up.
Now, are you planning to do that again this year?
Oh, absolutely. I'm getting the head nod, right? You can't see that on a podcast, but yes, absolutely.
Student voice has been very important in us developing our mental health action plan. Our students are so able to tell us what they need and what they want in the school setting. We can take that back as a board leadership team and really talk about what we heard them say, and we need to work that into our plan, right? We may think as adults, we know what they need, but even talking about just the summer program that Danielle was talking about, even the people we had working on the summer program, they were trying to convince us, well, let us do it virtually because we think we'll get more people virtually, and that's their world, right? And I kept saying to Danielle, Danielle, we have to get people back face-to-face. We really need face-to-face. So I said, even if we get two students, it will be good. We've done our thing. So to get 300 was just fantastic. And everybody kind of just went, oh, okay, that was good, right? And it was just so good to see the feedback from the students that now the biggest thing was, can we do that at elementary too? That was the feedback from our community. So we're trying to think of, how do we do this in the summer, right? How do we continue our mental health services over the summer to make sure students feel, we are still here for you? It's July and August, but we're still here for you. What do you need?
And sometimes it's not calling it mental health or mental wellness. You know, I've learned that the hard way as a parent that, I mean, we have amazing youth services and supports in our community, but they, youth don't necessarily want to go and sit and talk to a counselor. It needs to, you need, they need to feel differently engaged, if I can say that, that it doesn't seem like it's therapeutic. Absolutely. But on their terms, with their ideas. So it sounds like it'll be even better this year because you're taking that feedback.
Well, a good example would be a group of students who said, miss, we'll come, but call it a basketball camp and infuse some lessons for us, and we'll listen that way. But if you call it a basketball camp, we're going to come. So we take that back and we think, well, how can we make that work? That's a great idea. That's what they want.
Did you have food?
Well, we didn't do that one yet. They also want food. They did, they said that loud and clear.
We all like food.
Right? They want fun, they want food.
Feed us and we will come.
Yeah. And they want safe people. Yeah.
And I think we're really proud to, something that we did last year and we're continuing this year as well as our grade seven retreats. So all grade sevens across our board get to go out to the Oxley Holy Retreat. And we do an integration with our faith and wellness and really introducing that. And it's a great day for them, especially for some of them, you know, last year, they hadn't been on a field trip in a long time. So getting to see them all come together and experience that and really start those conversations. And you get to watch those lightbulb moments of that, oh, yeah, and they're connecting with each other and we're having fun doing it.
Now, we consider your board an important community partner, and are grateful to be working together through a Transportation and Stability Grant funded through the Ministry of Education in collaboration with the Ministry of Children and Youth Services. Can you talk a bit about how this is helping us to support children served by the society who attend your schools across Windsor Essex?
Certainly. So this is a wonderful collaboration we have with CAS. The ministry provides funding for transportation and stability for any children and youth or children who are being supported by CAS. So those services would include, let's say, a student is out of their current home and they're across the town in a foster family situation. We're able to transport them to their homeschool. So that provides some stability for that student, whether it's a cab, whether it's a volunteer driver. So that's an example. Another example might be summer camps for students who might not have had that opportunity, right? So anything that would help a student educationally or help them with their wellness. What is going to help that student feel okay in the current situation that they're in? It's an excellent way to provide what students need. And our administrators, CAS workers, we work hand-in-hand with that and are able to think outside the box even about what we could be providing the student, right?
It's a real wraparound approach, yeah, to that stability and continuity for those young people, for sure.
Definitely.
Now, what do you find parents and caregivers are asking for in terms of help? And how many people would you say, parents and caregivers, access the services that are provided by your board?
I'd say that's an interesting question, Mike. It's very difficult to answer. I would say parents want supports for their students, for their children, right? We also have to keep in mind, the school setting is an educational setting, right? We're not a mental health facility. We do everything we can to support students if they're struggling, but we have to really focus on the education of that student. So we try to bridge supports for parents. Sometimes those supports are taken, sometimes those supports are not taken. Sometimes those supports, there's a waitlist. So that is what we're really struggling with. We would love to reach out and offer more parent sessions as well, but with parents working, the attendance would be limited as well. So that's something that's on our new mental health action plan for next year. How can we bridge that need in our community that parents also want information, right? So we have to research that. We may have to offer some virtual, we may have to offer some face-to-face, but we really want to reach out to our parents and see what they would need from us, keeping in mind that we have to be educators, right? And that there's supports for mental health in the community, but we're the education side of that. Does that make sense?
Yeah, absolutely. And I think similar to us, with our mandate and child welfare being best interest of children, they don't live in isolation of their families. And same with you. In order for kids to be well and have what they need, parents, caregivers need to be well and have what they need. But that's the big challenge we have, I think, in our community is, how do we do that? Because we, both of our organizations don't provide that intensive support and treatment to caregivers who need that. So definitely something we need to really look seriously at in our community and keep pushing, you know, the mandate to get them the support that they need, for sure.
And for us, we focus, sorry, Mike, we're focusing too on, how do we get those resources like Kelly talked about from School Mental Health Ontario that are for families into the hands of families so that they have those? You know, we're hearing loud and clear, they just want to know they're not alone. They just want to know that, you know, there are those tips and those tricks or those moments to just say, this is difficult, right? There are challenges when you're, you know, raising a family and you're doing all the pressures and we hear you and we're here for you. And so sometimes even just communicating what they can expect that their children are getting when they're at school and they're in this setting, but really just that validation that we're here and, you know, how we can get these resources out. And we're always looking for, you know, the best way of sending out those resources and the best way of communicating, you know, what does mental wellness look like in our schools? And how can we model that at home?
We certainly encourage parents to continue reaching out to the teacher, the principal at the school if they have any concerns that they just don't know how to navigate. Our school staff is very approachable for things like that, and we can help. There's things we can do, there's things we maybe can't do, but we will sit with them and problem solve and help them get the resources that they need. So we really encourage parents to reach out with any of those questions to the school staff. That's what we're here for. We create that wraparound care for the students, and we have to work with our families on that because we can't do it alone.
Right. And I think the wonderful thing is, none of us work in silos anymore. We can't do it all, you can't. And I think the collaboration within the community of working in partnership with other community organizations and seeing what we can do together really kind of puts the pieces of the puzzle together rather than just thinking we have to do it all.
And if I could just add to that, I think what we are seeing a common theme with the podcast that we're doing is really breaking down or trying to eliminate the stigma attached to some of these issues that individuals and families in particular are experiencing. So whether mental health, whether poverty or other things. So that is something we can collectively do too, is to really focus on that and bring more compassion to the world, right, to our communities and as we're working together, for sure.
Absolutely.
So I really appreciate where this conversation is going. And it does, when we talk about mental health and we talk about things that can go wrong, what this conversation is also about is about hope. things that can go wrong, what this conversation is also about is about hope. And so, uh, what I'd like to hear from the two of you is if you had a magic wand uh, and you could just wave it, what would you wish for 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 your students or, you know, what advice would you give them?
That's a good question. Um, I would have to say for our students, I would hope that every student walks into our school, feels accepted, feels that they have a place to go. Feels that they're okay to talk about whatever they need to talk about with with one of our trusted adults. And that they want to come to school and they want to be in that environment because that environment is an amazing place for them and they feel safe there. Um, I would say that would be my magic wand moment.
Yeah, just kind of echoing, go off of Kelly, um, that they never feel alone. That there always is someone that they can turn to. Um, and you know, right across, uh, teachers come to mind first. The amazing administration, our custodian staff, our EAs, our support staff, you know, it's a building filled filled with people who care. The and the students are our why. And it's why we get up and we do what we do every day. So if they could know just how much that, you know, they are cared about and that that is an accepting place for them. Um, and I'd stretch it beyond that to the families as well. You know, that there are so many people, you know, behind the scenes thinking of how can we continue to instill that hope and power and inspire that whole family? Um, to just feel welcomed and to know that there are people there um listening. Um, and like Kelly said, it's an amazing place. It's great to have children growing up in the board right now as I get to see, you know, the just different initiatives that are going on and to just stay connected, to get out and and become part of the school community because it really is a family. Our whole board really is that family of, you know, wanting everybody to be able to be their best.
Wow, that's very inspiring. Thank you. Any final thoughts that you want to leave our listeners with? Anything that we didn't cover that you want to mention? Any plugs?
I think, just Tina, I think this is a good start. I think we have to con- continue these conversations with our community partners. I know, um, we collaborate with our lead agency as well, even just around the right time and right care um, program initiative for our students. I think we need to continue these conversations and look at what's working, what's not working and how can we work together to to fix it and to make it better for our students, right? Because we need the learning environment for our student to be conducive to their learning. And the only way we can do that is together.
Mm hmm, for sure.
And I think I would just add, just a a minute to say thank you. Thank you to our incredible staff. Um, we're going to encourage all of them to follow this podcast now. So, um, I want them just, yeah. I want them just to know how much we appreciate. Uh, we see the work, the dedication. We see the time they take away um to give back to the school community. Um, it's not just a job. And we and we get that and we know it can be tiring and we are so appreciative of everything they're giving to the students because we can't do this all alone.
Right. I think that's a great way to end this podcast is really recognizing the uh, important work that's being done, that it's difficult times for everyone in in your sector, in our sector. Uh, but uh, to inspire those to keep going and and we can see some hope and some positivity uh, as we step forward together. So I want to thank you both, Kellyanne and Danielle for for being part of this podcast, inspiring community. And uh, this is, hopefully we'll have you back. Hear more updates from from your board and the great work that you're doing. So thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mike.